Are you hearing it? Just so nothing blows up. I think it's coming from that speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 21st, 2014 Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. To begin the meeting, I'd like to introduce Claire Hensley. She is a fourth grade student at Connekegee Elementary. She will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Claire?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please.
Thank you. Claire, would you like to introduce the guest you brought with you today?
My mom in the orangish, pinkish shirt, Ms. Hensley, and then my little brother Cohen, which is three.
All right, and tell us, what is your favorite subject in school?
Science.
Science. Why do you like science?
Because the experiments that we do, they're kind of fun, and I just like it.
Just like it. That's all the reason you need. What else do you like to do when you're not in school?
I like to do gymnastics.
Gymnastics. Anything else?
Well, I'm happy that I'm a Level III now, and I'm competing.
Good for you. Is there anything else you want to tell us about yourself? Any questions from the board members? Well, we thank Mrs. Hensley. We thank you, Claire. And we thank your brother for coming with you. And we hope you have a great -- she said she has gymnastics tonight, so we hope you have a great practice. And thank you for coming to start our meeting for us.
Thank you.
Are there any other guests or students that board members would like to introduce? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented by the Agenda Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mrs. Fisher, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. The student member concurs. Approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of minutes from the board's closed session held on Tuesday, October the 7th, 2014, and also included in the packet is the minutes from the business meeting held on the same date.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to zero. Student member concurs, and one member abstains.
Mr. President, I know I'm out of order, but there's a gentleman here with us this evening that I think we might want to recognize.
Sure, please.
He's working on his Eagle Scout merit badge. Would you stand and maybe introduce yourself?
Come to the microphone so they can hear you on TV.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Garrett Ammons. I'm from Troop 252, which is located in Hagerstown, and I'm working on my Assistant Ship in the Nation merit badge, which is required for my Eagle. And I go to Boonsborough Middle School.
Good for you. What grade are you in in Boonsborough?
I'm in seventh grade.
Seventh grade. You know my daughter, Joseph, Josie Harding?
Sounds familiar.
Sounds familiar. She's a memorable young lady sometimes, I know.
And I think someone's here with you?
Yes, this is my lovely mother.
Well done.
You've got the charm badge, right?
Really charming.
Well, congratulations and good luck. We hope you enjoy the meeting, and good luck the rest of the way in working towards your Eagle Scout. That's quite an achievement.
Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. We have two individuals who've signed up to speak. First is Peter Perini. Mr. Perini? This commenting will be given three minutes according to board policy, so as soon as you're ready, Mr. Perini, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. My name is Peter Perini, and I'm a candidate for the Washington County Board of Education, and I will be very brief. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. During this campaign, there seems to be a recurring theme, or rather, a question of whether or not the candidates believe that Washington County Public Schools is on the right track under the leadership of Dr. Wilcox. And for the record, I firmly believe that Dr. Wilcox is doing an excellent job, and I hope that he continues to do so for many years to come. There have been several opportunities for all the candidates to give each of our personal opinion on whether Dr. Wilcox should continue as the Superintendent of Washington County Public Schools. There was an opportunity for the candidates to answer that question at the Chamber of Commerce forum, as well as in the written answers to the Voters Guide, insert, in the Herald Mail newspaper. In both cases, some of the candidates dodged the question, while others, including myself, demonstrated full support to Dr. Wilcox. And this is not a management versus labor issue. Most of the teachers that I have talked to have expressed a satisfaction with how they are treated by Dr. Wilcox. As a matter of fact, given the makeup of the board, it is more prudent to have board members who can work with the superintendent. It is my opinion that the Washington County Public Schools needs a strong superintendent like Dr. Wilcox to lead the organization forward. Clayton Wilcox has been the Superintendent of Schools in Washington County for three years. Anyone who has been paying even the least amount of attention knows whether or not he's doing a good job. If a person is running for the Board of Education, asking for the public trust to guide this organization, then that person should at least have an idea and opinion about the effectiveness of Dr. Wilcox's leadership. I will end with stating that in today's Herald Mail, I was endorsed by the newspaper in my race for the Board of Education. I encourage everyone to read that editorial and see for themselves what is being said about just how important this race is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perini.
Please tell me this is the last.
The next individual who's signed up to speak is Mr. Ryan Minor. Mr. Minor?
Good evening, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Hardings, and members of the board. I apologize for my shoddy appearance tonight. I was working on a job all day. Tonight, I'd come before the board and hoping that you'd be able to provide clarification. First, I hold many of you on this board in extremely high regard and esteem, and I believe that this superintendent and this administration has had a profound and lasting impact upon this community and our school system as a whole. I'm very impressed by the manner in which each of you have dedicated a lot of your time to ensuring that our school system is the best school system in the state of Maryland, and I'm very proud of that. With that said, one thing that concerns me is after three years of this board, having the privilege to work with Dr. Wilcox, you know, there's been much discussion over the process of evaluating the superintendent. Some claim, who are running for this position, that there are simply not enough facts, and I find that to be totally ridiculous. And my question is, or hopefully that you can provide clarification, what are the evaluation standards for the superintendent, and are they available to the public? Are the goals available to the public that are set? That piques my curiosity, how someone running for this position simply cannot give a accurate evaluation after having a superintendent for three years. The second thing that hopefully we can provide clarification on this evening is, the Herald Mail reported on a press conference the other day that I found incredibly troubling that was held on school property. It was a partisan press conference denouncing one of the gubernatorial candidates' platform. And I was just curious if that press conference was sanctioned by this school system, and if they filed a request for facilities usage. And finally, in two weeks, this process will be over, and I think many of us will collectively exhale. And I just want to say from the very bottom of my heart, thank you for everything that you have done. If I am lucky enough and blessed enough to be a member of this board, I believe that it will be an excellent experience to work with many of you. This has been a roller coaster of ups and downs. It's been a transformational race for this community, and I'm very proud to know each of you and to have learned a great deal since we filed back in February. I'm extraordinarily proud of this administration. I'm extraordinarily proud of this education system. I had 13 years in this system. It was the best of my life. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Is there a motion to suspend Policy KD for the purposes of determining whether anybody else who is in the audience but hasn't signed up to speak would like to speak?
Go ahead.
So moved, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, the question's on Mr. Ridenhour's motion to suspend Policy KD for the purposes determining whether anyone else in the audience who has not signed up wishes to speak during public comment. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. The student member concurs. Is there anybody else who's attended today who'd like the opportunity to speak during public comment? Okay, that brings us to board member response to public comment. Is there any brief response to comments from members of the public?
May I speak? One of the questions that was raised by Mr. Minor was, was the press conference sanctioned by the administration or by the school system? And no, it was not. There was not a facilities use form that was filled out to be on our campus. Anything that was done was without any of our knowledge, using our site as a backdrop.
And I'll just make a few remarks regarding the evaluation criteria. The board does meet and did meet in June of this year to complete an evaluation of Dr. Wilcox's performance from the previous year. That's done with input and discussion from all seven board members and the superintendent. And at the conclusion of that process, we sat in a closed, again, a closed session because this is a personnel matter, and developed a set of criteria and goals that we would use to evaluate the superintendent's performance for the next year, from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Those are not public documents, just as I think that most of us who are in employed positions where we're being evaluated wouldn't necessarily want our personnel files released to other people. So if the superintendent would want them made public, or the board were to agree with the superintendent to make them public, that's certainly a discussion that we could have as a group, but as a matter of practice, we don't release those documents to the public. Is that a fair representation, Dr. Wilcox?
It is a fair representation, and honestly, the goals and objectives, while they're part of my personnel record, I could not unilaterally decide to release them, nor could the board unilaterally. It has to be done by mutual consent, and that's a contractual agreement between myself and the board.
And just to complete that, not only does policy and the Code of Maryland regulations say that we evaluate the superintendent every year, his contract says that we will evaluate him every year, and it lays out the parameters by which that is a confidential matter. So I hope that answers the broad question as to specifics regarding year-to-year goals and how the board evaluates those. That brings us to the first item under new business, which is the Consent Agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. There are nine items on the agenda this evening. I prepared some very brief comments, and their folks here, I know that would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The first item is the Contract for Professional Auditing Services. Smith Elliott has recently completed the 2014 audit. This recommendation is to exercise the board's option to appoint Smith Elliott as an auditor for a second year to perform the 2015 audits. The prices for those audits are provided in the board packet, so I won't reiterate those here. Needless to say, staff is satisfied with the services we've received from Smith Elliott. Second on the agenda is an item, Claims Audit Services for Employee and Retiree Medical and Prescription Plans. This was an RFP that was issued by the Purchasing Department, working closely with the benefits folks and our CFO here. We're looking to establish a contract with a qualified firm to conduct an audit of our employee medical and pharmacy benefit programs. This was a recommendation to the school system in our recent legislative audit. The objective would be to evaluate the performance of Care First and Express Scripts regarding their standards of accuracy, timeliness, and the quality of their services that they provide our employees. This project is recommended for award to Sage Brush Solutions. They were one of three responding companies, and they were the lowest-priced company, but they did meet the objectives, and they do have the necessary qualifications and experience the Evaluation Committee feels to handle this contract. Third on the agenda, we solicited bids for the purchase and installation of LED architectural front entrance signs for the Washington County Technical High School, as well as South Hagerstown High School. We asked for an alternate for the Washington County Technical High School sign that would utilize the existing brick and block sign that's currently in front of the Tech High School. And we're making a recommendation to move forward with the bids from Century Graphics, doing business as Sign Here, and have worked closely with the two school principals, and I've included in the packet some renderings of what those signs would look like for your information. Fourth on the agenda is a bid that included rotary lift, air compressors, and some miscellaneous equipment that's used in our career and technology education programs. It was awarded on a line item basis, or is being recommended to be awarded that way. Most of these items will be delivered in two to three weeks, so they'll be available for use in these programs very soon. This bid is being recommended for award to three separate companies in a combined total of over $30,000. Fifth on the agenda is requisition 177068 to Hyperspace to provide and install furniture that would create three semi-private collaboration areas for staff to use on the second floor of the Center for Education Services here. Item six is a requisition to provide the technical engineering, licensing, and provision and installation of the equipment that is needed to establish a high-speed internet connection for Cascade Elementary School. It is estimated that this project will increase the bandwidth at the school by six times over what they're currently receiving there. This vendor has done other projects for the school system, and they've provided the same rate of discount for some of the equipment and the same labor rate as was applicable for a much larger project issued by the Port of Pittsburgh. The total price tag for that project is $34,258. Item seven is a requisition to Atlantic Security Systems to upgrade the security cameras and software at Morgansville Elementary School. These upgrades, this upgrade is needed due to age and wear of the existing analog cameras still in use at Morgansville. Item eight on the agenda is another purchase of iPads. We're looking to purchase six 10-packs or a total of 60 iPads. Twenty of those are designated for Boonsborough Middle School. Item nine on the agenda is a contract for professional design services for the redesign of the WCPS main website. This recommendation is to hire the Hagerstown-based company, Hiroc, to redesign our website. A better website is needed for responding to the needs of internal stakeholders, students, and the community. Hiroc has digital marketing, is a digital marketing agency, starting in Hagerstown about five years ago or so, and they've recently expanded to the Baltimore area. They employ about 25 professionals who have expertise in a variety of areas, including marketing, creative services, web and mobile development, and video production. They worked with staff in, over the past year, to develop the micro websites that you may be familiar with. The purchasing department has one, and the human resources department have one, that are currently integrated with the school system's website. As we, as I can personally attest, we've been very satisfied with the services and the relationship that we've developed with Hiroc Studios during that implementation. A copy of that contract, as I mentioned, is provided in entirety for your review and consideration. The cost of this project is $97,280. It does have ongoing costs that we estimate somewhere between $15,000 and $21,000 a year. We did receive a second competitive quote, for comparison, and we're pleased that Hiroc has given us what we consider to be a very competitive proposal, based on that second quote that we've received. This concludes the nine items on the board's consent packet this evening. And here I have resources if you have questions, and there are probably folks here who can support any answers that we may need to provide. We can help you with that.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to move for the adoption of the Consent Agenda and to read into the record thereof.
Excellent.
To approve the bids and requisitions for professional auditing services to Smith Elliott Kearns &amp; Company, LLC at a cost of $47,970 for the financial statement audit, and $8,124 for the A133 single audit. Claims audit services to Sage Brush Solutions at $60,000. LED signs for South Hagerstown High School and Washington County Technical High School at $54,415. Rotary lift, air compressors, and miscellaneous equipment to Compressed Air Services at $22,160. Folds Manufacturing and Industrial Supply at $5,299, and Midwest Technology Products at $3,351.20. Furniture for the second floor for Center for Educational Services to Hyperspace at $29,978.94. Point-to-point wireless connectivity at Cascade Elementary School to Connex at $34,258. Security camera and software upgrades at Morgansville Elementary School to Atlantic Security Systems at $28,030.50, and purchase six 10-packs of iPads to Apple Incorporated at $25,740. Professional service proposal for redesign of the WCPS website to Hiroc for $97,280, and I move for adoption, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second. Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour, to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions from board members? Mrs. Fisher?
The second item, I guess it is, the Claims Audit Services for Employee and Retiree Medical and Prescription Plans. Will there be any opportunity for employees to have input as to the performance of Care First and Express Scripts?
In the solicitation, the scope of services, it's not been addressed that way, so I'm not really sure how to answer your question, other than to say it wasn't anticipated to invite that kind of feedback as part of the audit.
I see Mr. South coming up here. I don't know if he has a...
I was gonna say, I think Ms. Freeman is absolutely correct. This was not set up to get that individual solicitation from end users.
I was gonna say, there'd be auditing the records, primarily the data from Care First and Express Scripts.
This bid will be strictly to comply with the requirements or the recommendation of the legislative auditors, which was to look at how our administrators for health care and prescription drugs handle the claims, if the claims are handled within the parameters of our plan, and if they're paid properly, and if the providers are reimbursed at the proper amounts.
Understand. Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Brightman?
Could I continue on that same item, Mr. South? And later on in tonight's agenda, we're talking, I think you're giving a presentation, our staff will be on the, our self-insured, our health care, and I noticed that the prescription part of that is about 30% of our total cost. It's fairly high. I do know that Mabe is offering an informational session that I believe staff attended about Keenan.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how would that tie into this audit? Would this help us inform whether we have opportunity for cost savings, and that Keenan might be a possible vendor to go to to help with cost savings?
This is really going This is really going to look more at, is Blue Cross and is Express Scripts paying the claims in accordance to our plans? In other words, they wouldn't be looking at...
Cost-saving opportunities.
Cost savings per se. The cost savings would only be in the form of if they're, if they're overpaying claims.
Incorrect, exactly. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I'll say I'm excited to see the contract for the redesign of the webpage. I think that'll be a great, I mean, the webpage has a lot of information on it, but the way webs, websites design changes so quickly to accommodate different kinds of devices and the way technology moves, I think it's time for a tune-up. And I, I know Hiroc does fantastic work, so I look forward to seeing what they'll do. They've done great work on some of our other systems, and I think it's a great choice and look forward to seeing what they do. If there are no further discussion, the question's on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. South, I think you stay right where you are. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to reclassify three amounts...
Yes, it is paperwork.
Needs paperwork. From the unassigned fund balance to committed fund balance. No problem.
In its, in its pronouncement number 54, the Government Accounting Standards Board provides that the governing body of any governmental entity may commit all or portion of its fund balance for specific purposes. Once a defined amount of the fund balance is set aside by a vote of the governing body, it is placed in a committed fund balance that can only be used for the designated purpose for which it has been committed. However, if at a later time circumstances change, the governing body obviously has the authority to reverse their original vote and return the funds to the unassigned fund balance. This accounting feature allows the governing body to provide transparency to the public by disclosing in its financial statements how it intends to use all or portions of its excess that has been generated with taxpayer funds. To that end, staff recommends that the board designate three separate committed fund balances. Those three, those three fund balances would be as follows. First, a downtown facilities fund. The recommended amount for that fund would be $2 million. This fund would be designed to buy down the annual or monthly lease purchase amount associated with the building of an academic hub. Alternatively, this amount could be used to fund the early buyout of the lease purchase agreement associated with the Barbara Ingram School. Finally, this reserve might be used to fund costs associated with the establishment of any boutique learning facilities that might feed into the academic hub. The second fund that we're recommending be, this evening, is a private-public partnership fund. We're recommending an amount of $500,000 be placed into that fund. This fund would provide the board of the ability to participate, to support requests for large capital projects that would be initiated at the school level with the approval of the principal. Such projects would only be undertaken with the significant financial support from an established school booster or school support group. The amount of the board's participation in each project would need to be approved by a vote of the board. As an example of this fund, it could be used to have access to when the total project budget exceeds $500,000, and the established booster or support group has raised controls and has agreed to fund at least 80% of the total project budget. These parameters would, of course, be at the final discretion of the board. I was just giving an example. The third proposed fund is a district technology initiative. The recommended amount for that fund would be $2 million. This fund would be created for the express purpose of purchasing, leasing, or leasing to own hardware, netware, or software on a district-wide scale. If the board chooses to commit these funds this evening, after the establishment of the proposed three funds, the unassigned fund balance would still stand at $3.4 million. The Finance Committee reviewed this recommendation at its meeting on September 23rd and requested its staff forwarded to the full board for approval. At this time, I respectfully request the board's approval of this recommendation. Of course, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to reclassify a total of $4.5 million from unassigned fund balance to three distinct committed fund balances as follows. One would be the downtown facilities committed fund balance of $2 million. Second, private-public partnerships committed fund balance of $500,000. And third, district technology initiative committed fund balance of $2 million.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour, to establish three committed fund balances. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
Just a couple comments, really, for clarification, is this does follow our policy regarding the use of fund balance as being a one-time or non-recurring expenditure, so we're certainly in compliance with that policy. And as far as the private-public partnerships, we also have a policy regarding how that is set up, and we've done that after several years of projects that we have already used this type of private-public partnership arrangement. So I think these are all great uses. And again, as stated, Mr. South, if, if the board changes priorities, we can also revisit these.
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
I'm gonna ask you to look into your crystal ball. Can, is there any way you can determine the likelihood that additional monies will be added to the unassigned fund balance during the rest of this fiscal year?
It's, it's still very early in the year to make a prediction about fund balance that will, will, monies that would fall to the fund balance in, at the end of June. At this particular time, we are looking at first-quarter budget adjustments, and they are balanced, so there's no, no amounts going to the fund balance as of the end of first quarter. And we'll be carrying that through the Finance Committee and then to the full board, probably within the month.
I realize that these amounts can be changed or put back in the unassigned fund balance by the board. I'm just always concerned about an extreme emergency occurring and making sure we've got monies that can cover that, some kind of disaster or...
And, and that, I believe, is why we, the staff recommended leaving 3.4 million in the unassigned fund balance. And that does make finance folks sleep better at night when they do have those kinds of reserves to fall back on. I would remind the board, however, that some years ago, before there was the collegial relationship that you now have with the Board of County Commissioners, the commissioners often would require that we not carry fund balances. And there were, there are times I remember our fund balance getting as low as $17,000. So I believe that we are well-positioned, and we have spoken with the commissioners, as you may recall, regarding holding a fund balance to cover any extenuating circumstances that might occur where we might need money from them. And they have said publicly that they would help us out in dire emergencies, if you recall those conversations several years ago.
I think, Chris, it's also fair to say that we do have some positions right now that are running unfilled. We have some expenses, you know, we both review the expenses by fund by category every month. We're running slightly ahead and behind in some of our money. So I think to Mrs. Fisher's question, by the time the year ends, we probably will have some money that will fall to fund balance, either through unspending balances or through, you know, outright actions to save.
I, I think that's probably a fair statement, yes. But at this particular time, we have none, none to drop the fund.
Yeah, in the first quarter, we don't.
And a related question, I know we have, obviously, insurance on our facilities. Do we have flood insurance on our buildings?
We have flood insurance? No, ma'am, we do not.
Wouldn't be necessary, Mrs. Fisher.
Clear Spring thought it was necessary also, but...
What I'm saying is, wouldn't be necessary for us to have that type of insurance based on the fact that none of our schools are within a flood plain?
Neither were the houses.
Yeah, but they are. If you look at, they're in the 500-year flood plain, some of them. None of our schools are even remotely close to, to a flood plain. I don't think we'd give funding if it was.
Okay.
Our PNC coverage with MAB does cover extenuating circumstances of storm. For example, when, when the schools on the eastern shore get hit with, with a hurricane, which we have been hit with hurricanes before, that kind of flooding is covered. Anything that's, that's a result of a, of a roof failure or something like that. Glass breakage that, you know, water comes in, you know, those kinds of things are covered under our PNC policy through, through the MAB pool.
And for those who don't know, PNC is property in casualty.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. We have an Eagle Scott here tonight, I want to make sure he knows. Or soon to be.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. South, speaking of emergencies, what, what is the daily operational expenses of the board? I thought I heard you tell me we would be okay for like X number of days with certain number of dollars available.
I apologize, Mr. Bailey, I'm drawing a blank on that number at this point.
Well, one way to look at it is if you take away weekend days and say that we're, we have 300 days in the year.
It's a little over a million dollars.
It's a million dollars a day. We're about a $300 million business, takes us around a million dollars a day to keep going. Now...
That's the number that I, was in the back of my head. Operational, it's about a million dollars per day.
Yeah, it's kind of some dirty math, but that's about right.
An interesting number.
It's slightly over that number, Mr. Bailey. I'm not exactly sure what the exact number is.
I think you've quoted, I think you've quoted it before.
I have given you that number before, but I apologize, I don't have it right here.
It's all right.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Williams, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Just a question. Mr. South, you just mentioned that there's no money this quarter going into the unassigned fund balance. Can you tell us what the amount was that went into the unassigned fund balance at the end of last year?
For total last year, it was about $4 million.
$4 million?
That, that was not all at the end of the year. Some of that was at the front quarter.
Right, throughout the, the year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I'll just say for myself that I intend to support the motion. I like that, that the superintendent has made a recommendation, and the board is making its intentions clear for how we intend to use that money that can really only be used for one-time funds. And I like all three of the proposals. Number one, for the academic hub, you know, we continue to talk about it, we voted on an MOU a couple of weeks ago, approved an MOU a couple of weeks ago. I think this continues to show that this board is serious about this project and that we're willing to commit funds to it. As we've gone to our partners in the county and at the city and asked them to commit funds to, I think it's appropriate that we take the first step in establishing dedicated dollars that we're willing to use for this project. This doesn't get us all the way there, but it certainly is a great first step in showing our intentions and our seriousness. Second, the public-private partnership fund, we're approached, I won't say often, but from time to time with groups that want to do things, whether it's with athletic facilities or bands or other types of things, and want us to participate with them. If you talk about 80% of the funds for these projects coming from the private sector, the way I look at it is we're leveraging our $500,000 to get $250,000 worth of total projects completed, if I've done my quick math there.
Two million, five.
Two million.
What did I say?
Twenty, 250,000.
2.5 million, that's what I meant to say. So we're really leveraging our, our investment to get additional private sector investment that I think will benefit our kids. And I want to emphasize on that fund, too. You know, people think of that as associated with athletics, but there's nothing in the language in this motion that would restrict it to an athletic facility. If, I assume if a band, group of band boosters wanted to come and expand a band room, or if a theater group wanted to come and make an addition to a theater at one of the schools, those would certainly be projects that would qualify under the language that's in the motion. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, you know, whether it's athletics or the arts, or, you know, if somebody wanted to come up with, if, if the Barbering of School for the Arts Foundation wanted to come up with money and ask us to partner with them to do something at the School for the Arts, that would certainly qualify under the language that we've got. So, given the breadth of possible opportunities and how it will leverage, as I keep saying, our, our funds, I think that's a very, I support that particular fund. And finally, district technology, I think, we all know that the staff's been working on a countywide initiative for how we're going to manage our, our devices and how we're going to manage technology in the classroom and with our staff. We all know that that's not free, and those who pay attention to what we do see that just about every meeting, we're approving 50, 100 iPads, we're approving new computers. So to put funds dedicated to an initiative, I think just makes sense from a practical point of view, and I think it makes sense from a good governance point of view. So for all three funds, I think they make a lot of sense, and I'll be glad to support them. Any other discussion? If not, the question's on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the three funds to committed fund balances. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. South. Third item under new business is consideration of the first read of proposed changes to policy IHBH Public Charter Schools. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you. Good evening. In 2003, new legislation was enacted which vested local boards of education with the authority to establish charter schools. This new law required local boards of education to have a policy in place for such entities. In October of 2003, this board of education adopted policy IHBH. Dr. Wilcox recommended that a work group be established to study this policy and also the application that a charter school must complete if it's considering establishing such a school. This work group was composed of Denise Frye, president of the Washington County Teachers' Association, Cheryl Lannan, principal of Pleasant Valley Elementary, Brian Albert, a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee, Cara Bernhams, supervisor of pre-K math, and Jackie Fisher, school board member. The work group conducted six work sessions, very lengthy sessions. During those meetings, the work group studied the current policy, it studied the current application, it examined the policy, policies of other boards of education, boards of education across the state, it also examined the Maryland State Department of Education's model application. As a result of this comprehensive review, the work group recommended several changes to the policy, and it completely revised the application. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the members of that work group. I also want to thank Jamie Brown, who worked very closely with them and provided the necessary support so that they could complete their work. The recommendations of the work group were then submitted to the policy committee. The policy committee conducted two public work sessions where it closely examined the recommendations of the, of the work group. And it accepted those recommendations and then offered some additional minor adjustments to the charter policy. The policy sets forth very clearly that a charter school is... The policy sets forth very clearly that a charter school is to offer a non-traditional educational program, the type of program that is distinct from any program now provided by a public school here in Washington County. The policy also sets forth the financial requirements that a charter school must meet. It sets forth the manner in which they will be evaluated, and it also sets forth the standards that will be applied if it becomes necessary to revoke a charter. In closing, during the 2013 legislative session, a new law was passed that required that a study be conducted of the charter school law. That study continues to this day. They are required to report by December 31st of this year to the Maryland General Assembly. That study group is to offer suggested changes or improvements to the current law. At this time, we're requesting the approval of the first reading of the proposed changes to policy IHBH. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the first reading of revised policy IHBH entitled Public Charter Schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mrs. Williams, is there any discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
A couple questions, really, having sat through two public hearings in Frederick County when they were looking at discussing applications for charter schools, public charter schools, I didn't see anything in here, and maybe I missed it, about holding public hearings as part of the process for the application. And I don't know if the work group discussed that, or...
There is no legal requirement to conduct public hearings.
And I understand not having the legal requirement, I would just say it's important to possibly have buy-in from the community, and I was wondering if this board had discussed that it might be to our advantage to have that public hearing to discuss the application, what the pros and cons might be for that.
That's, the work group did not discuss that particular point.
I just think it's an important part of this component for the community to understand, because we are talking about a transfer of public money, so I would just present that. A couple other questions, I'm not sure quite where they would fit in, but on page seven of eight, where you look at I, a defined management and administrative structure that will be in place for the public charter school, how would we limit the number of founders, the individuals who bring an application forward to us, to be sure that not all of them become staff positions? There seems to be some history of that happening in the past, and I don't know quite how we would word that, but I think there should be some structured way of not being a job security for the founders of this application. Have you ever seen anything, Mr. Trotta, on how that might?
I have, I have not, I'm not aware of any particular situations across the state that have occurred. I've worked on numerous charter applications and charter negotiations. The, as you go through the process, you're always, you always want to make certain that the individuals who are going to be operating the school have the necessary credentials, knowledge, and background to operate the school. So that certainly could be something, as you go through the application review process, that the superintendent, who's responsible for administering that process, could note concerns in that regard, management, things of that nature, which could be a basis perhaps for denying the charter, which would then raise the issue to the state board level, which would then render some type of guidance on whether that concern is a valid concern. But I have not seen, it's not a requirement, there's nothing in the law that allows for limiting the number of sponsors.
Then becoming employed by the...
It would, that would, that would really be something that, when you look at the budget, that the charter schools do have a great deal of discretion in determining how they're going to expend their money. They can purchase services at their, from the school system, or they can provide those services based on the allocation that is provided to the charter school. So there could be situations where they would assume certain functions and manage those funds in such a way that would allow for some additional funding for staffing that they might determine is needed. Once again, you look at that during the application process, the budget that they, that the applicant submits is something that is scrutinized very carefully.
And on the same sort of idea, if you go from there to the student admission procedure, which is under, it's same page G, there has been some, again, history of a large number of legacy students, so again, the founders not only get jobs and become staff, but their children get some sort of preferential treatment as far as becoming students of the charter school. Is there any concern there, or some way that we can control the application process so it is fair and balanced?
The Maryland law requires that the charter school be open to all students who would like to attend the school. If you have more students than you have positions at the school, they are to go through a lottery process. Traditionally, the founders are allowed to designate their children to attend that particular school, and once again, those are sorts of things that are worked at early on in the application process.
During the process.
You, I have not, I have not seen a situation where there's such a large number of legacy students that it restricts other students from attending the school. But I have seen situations where they've had to conduct lotteries because you have a significant number of students who would like to attend, and it exceeds the enrollment allocated for that particular school.
And one final, and on that same note, is there any distinction legally that a public charter school can make between special ed and regular ed students when they apply?
Absolutely not. It's against the law. And as a matter of fact, they did amend the law at one point in time to make certain that charter schools clearly understood that they must comply with all federal laws that concern special needs students.
And provide all of those services.
Absolutely, and also that if there are any court orders that are in place, and there are several across the state that deal with certain boards of education, we are not an entity that's subject to any court orders, but that the charter school would also have to comply with court orders.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or discussion? Not, I'll just want to publicly thank Mrs. Fisher for the, I mean, Mr. Trotta talked about the time that the works, the time that the work group spent on this particular I don't know that even your description does it justice. I mean, it took hours and hours and hours and many, many meetings, and this policy is but a very, very small bit of the work product, which is pages upon pages, which I know Mrs. Fisher was very involved in writing, editing, revising. She put in, I was going to say hours, days if not weeks and months worth of work on this process, and I think we all owe her a thank you for the time and work that she did doing that. So I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that before we vote on the policy. So, thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, the question's on Mrs. Fisher's motion to approve the first read of policy IHBH. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
That brings us to item four under new business, which is the first read of F policies.
The Board of Education's Facilities Committee conducted an extensive review of the facility development policies. As a result of that review, the Facilities Committee recommended that 13 policies and two exhibits be rescinded. The reasoning for this recommendation is that many of these policies are already covered under Maryland state law or under the Code of Maryland Administrative Regulations. The Facilities Committee also recommended that five policies be updated and that two policies be rescinded but relocated elsewhere in the policy manual. The Policy Committee then reviewed the recommendations of the Facility Committee. It endorsed those recommendations and offered minor adjustments to several of the policies that are under your consideration this evening. We provided the members of the board with a chart that summarizes the action of the various committees and also sets forth the recommendations. Policy FA is one of the policies that has been recommended to be revised. Part of the process that staff went through in consultation with the two board committees was to review the existing policies and then incorporate certain provisions in those existing policies into policy FA so that those other policies could then be rescinded. Mr. Michael will now provide you with a general overview of revised policy FA.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. As both the Facilities Committee and the Policy Committee reviewed the information in the F policies, it's determined that almost all the information was covered either by the Maryland Department of Planning, the School Construction, Public School Construction Procedures Guide, or COMAR. However, in that discussion, we also decided that it was very important that our general public be aware of how important the process is of establishing the need for remodeling, for new facilities, for systemic projects, and that that information be contained in one place in the F policies. And therefore, under FA, a lot of that information has been compiled and summarized, mostly for the benefit of the public, so they could go to a one-source document and find at least the outline of much of the work that goes into, again, remodeling schools, new schools, systemic projects. So, the first step was to put the entire information into the new format that the board has established, clearly identifying that it's a very important process of the board to go through this process in determining what is needed for facilities for the future. Definitions, we did include some very noticeable items, tangible items that the board votes on every year. CIP, the board just voted on in September, that holds the board responsible for local and state finances. Comprehensive Maintenance Plan was passed by the board at the last board meeting, really establishes an expectation to the state that we're being good stewards of the facilities that have been constructed. Educational Master Plan, probably being the most important document the board approves, generally the first meeting in June. It is a document that establishes priorities for the upcoming year and for the out years as well. As a document, the board has the right to change every year and revisit every year, and both committees felt that was important. The educational specifications would be identified for any specific project that required special guidelines or direction to an architect, and then our enrollment projections are items that are required, again, by the Maryland Department of Planning, also to be included in our facilities master plan and are used largely to determine participation from the state on many of our projects if they involve an expansion project.
Scott?
Thank you. We next wanted to provide you with an overview of the five policies that have been recommended that they be revised. The first is policy FEB entitled Professional Architectural and Engineering Services. This policy has been updated to reflect the new format required by Board Policy BG. I would next want to move to policy FEDA, Construction Change Orders. This has also been placed in the new format, and the requirements for change orders and contingency budgets have been updated. Moving next to policy FF, Naming and Renaming of Facilities and Granting of Naming Rights. First of all, this is a new title for this policy, it's been placed in a new format, and we've added three new definitions to this policy. This policy now would define the terms facilities, fixed equipment, and movable equipment. And finally, moving to policy FFB, Information on Building Placks. This is a new title for this policy, we've placed it in the new format, and just by way of background, whenever a new building is constructed or there is a major renovation of an existing facility, it is a practice to place a plaque on that particular building. So this policy sets forth and updates the type of information that would be placed on a building plaque. The last two policies we want to cover with you are two policies that we are recommending be rescinded but relettered and placed in another location in the policy manual. Policy FEI is entitled Record, Retention, and Disposition. It has been placed in the brand-new format, and there have been some minor changes to this particular policy. The next is policy FC entitled Facilities Capitalization Program slash Capitalization Limit. Once again, recommending that that policy be rescinded and that it be redesignated as policy DIG. It also has a new title, Capitalization Program. We've placed it in our new format, and additionally, the purpose, there's been a purpose and background section added to this revised policy. We welcome any questions or comments.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I understand this is going to be done in three sections. Section one, I move to rescind the following policies and exhibits. FAA, Facility Development Priority Goals. FB, Educational Facilities Master Plan. FBA, Long Range Planning Advisors. FBB, Enrollment Projections. FE, Facilities Construction. FEA, Educational Specifications. FEA-E1, Educational Specifications Format, that's an exhibit. FEA-E2, Another Exhibit, The Desirable Configuration of Washington County's Elementary Schools. Policies FEC, Developer-Funded School Construction Projects. FECA, Facility Design Approval. FECD, Energy Conserving Construction. FEF, Advertising For Bids. FJ, Temporary Facilities. FL, Retirement of Facilities. And FLA, which is also Retirement of Facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mr. Bailey, to rescind the policies. Are there, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, the student member concurs.
In the second part of this motion, I move to approve the following revised policies. FA, Facilities Development Process. FEB, Professional Architectural and Engineering Services. FEDA, Construction Change Orders. FF, Naming and Renaming of Facilities and Granting of Naming Rights. And FFB, Building Placks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mrs. Brightman, to adopt the five new policies. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Looking at the policy FEA that we just rescinded, in this policy, there are five things listed after the heading Educational Specifications that define exactly what should be considered as ed specs. And while policy FA provides a definition of ed specs, I'm just wondering if these things need to be listed for clarity? And also, in the second paragraph on FEA, there are some items listed. The next to the last paragraph states the persons who should be involved in the development of ed specs. That information is not shown in FA, and I'm just wondering if there's any value to having that information moved from the rescinded policy FEA and placed into FA?
I'll let Rob chime in here. I also want to make sure that we credit Rob Rollins, Mark Mills, for their contributions to all these policies. It's been a two- or three-year process getting to this night. We've kind of started and stopped a number of times, but I'm glad we're finally here. Educational specifications are driven and required by the Maryland, the public school construction process. They're looking for very specific information. They review that document. Oftentimes, we'll have someone from their staff, often Gillian Storms, come up and sit in on some of our educational specification meetings. So they're very, they're going to review that document and ensure that we have the proper things in it before the educational specifications can be approved. So I believe that that information's covered in greater detail and direction from the state. Rob?
You know, it is. And also, EdSpecs are always brought before the Board for approval, before they're sent to the state. Part of the thinking, too, is to give each Board in the future down the road flexibility to be able to mold those EdSpecs in the way that they saw best fit. So that was some of the reasoning behind, especially with the exhibits and things like that that went along with it, why we thought it was good to rescind them.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
Just one on FA. I think while we discussed this in the Facilities Committee, we had talked about attaching an exhibit. The, there was a chart that I think Mr. Rollins had developed a few years ago that reflects the entire process of developer mitigation, and there was, it's a very nice pictorial chart. And we had talked about adding that as an exhibit. Is that still under consideration?
Last item, I believe, on the document, the next, close to the end.
Is it, is it a link to?
URL reference. Our intent is to link this document to that.
To that.
Flowchart, and then try to keep that flowchart up to date.
Perfect, because I think that's a huge help for the community and the citizens to see how that works, and perfect. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Not the questions on Mrs. Fisher's motion to adopt the five facilities policies. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. The student member concurs.
And finally, I move to approve the first reading to rescind Policy FC, entitled Facilities Capitalization Program/Capitalization Limit, and to recodeify it as Policy DIG, which is to be relocated to Section D, Physical Management of the Policy Manual, and entitled capitalization, or Facilities Capitalization Program. I move to approve the first reading to rescind Policy FEI, entitled Records, Retention, and Distribution, and to recodeify it as Policy EHB, which is to be relocated to Section E, Support Services of the Policy Manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mr. Ridenhour regarding Policies FC and FEI. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
I will say, that last item, Records, Retention, and Distribution, I think we found that in seven different locations throughout the policy manual, worded exactly the same, and we decided it only needed to be in there once.
Good job. Excellent.
Is there any other discussion? The staff at the table thanked the staff for all the work they've done getting us to this point, and I want to thank them as well. It's been a major effort of the Board, at least for the last two years, to try to consolidate and simplify, clarify our policy manual. This is a huge step in that direction. I also want to thank the two committees who have done so much work on this. I know the Facilities Committee has worked a long time in getting us to this point, deciding, developing that chart of things we can keep and things that we probably don't need, and the Facility, or the Policy Committee for our last few meetings in doing the same thing. So thanks to staff for working with all of us, thanks to the chairs of those two committees, as well as all the members. This is truly a group effort, and hopefully it'll make our policy manual clearer and better and more accessible to members of the public. If there are no further discussion, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to recodeify Policies FC and FEI. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five under New Business is adoption of legislative priorities for the 2015 Maryland Legislative Session. Earlier today during the work session, we decided not to actually adopt the priorities but to only appoint the members of the Legislative Response, Legislative Response Team and our Legislative Representative. So first, I will make a recommendation to the Board and ask if there's a motion to approve. As members of the Legislative Response Team, Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, Mr. Trotta, Artith Cade, and myself. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the appointments as listed to the Legislative Response Team for 2015, 2014, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, second by Mr. Bailey, to approve the Legislative Response Team. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. The student member concurs. The second recommendation I'll make is that we appoint Artith Cade as our Legislative Representative. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Mrs. Cade as the Washington County Board of Education Legislative Representative with Compensation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, second by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving Ms. Cade? Any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. The student member concurs. That brings us to the Superintendent Report.
This evening, I'm going to ask our Chief Academic Officer and our Director of High School Programs to come forward. They're going to talk to you about the University System of Maryland, or USM, and our College Technology Education Program that's affectionately known around this community as the Completor Program.
This evening, I want to share with you tonight the results of our Completor graduation rates for both the University System of Maryland and our CTE Career and Technical Education completers. First, we'll begin by reminding you of the requirements for a diploma in the state of Maryland. Students must earn a minimum of 24 credits, and they are all, the content areas of those credits are listed there on the screen. So simply to get a diploma in the state of Maryland, students must earn 24 credits in these areas. To earn an additional endorsement as either a University System of Maryland Completor or a Career and Technical Educational Completor, students must complete additional coursework that's, again, is in addition to the 24 credits required for the diploma. USM requires additional credits in the area of World Languages, and then there's a specific set of math courses that they must take, including Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Students who would like the CTE endorsement must take a series of four sequential courses in their particular career area of study. Again, the purpose of the Completor Program is to give our students a head start in career and/or college. We want to make it clear that our students complete in either one or both of these Completor programs. Every one of our graduates is a Completor, is either a USM Completor or is a CTE, and we have a small percentage who will complete both. They're called dual completers. Historically, we want you to know that we have a pretty consistent number of graduates. So the numbers that we look at this year is comparable to the number of graduates that we've had in previous years, and there are no significant shifts in the cohort graduation rate. We've been above 90, 91% since at least 2011. And so, again, just going into the data, we want you to have that background.
The next chart shows you that the number of, excuse me, the number of University System of Maryland completers, and we're at 74.8% of our students, a slight drop from the previous year. Typically, if there's a drop in one area, such as the University System of Maryland, then there's a corresponding increase in the CTE area, which, look at the next slide, you see that's the case. There's a slight increase in the number of CTE completors. We went from 39 to 39.4%. Part of that drop, I think, is also evident in the next slide, that we had a decrease in the number of dual completors. We went from 18.6% to 15.5% of our students being dual completors. Just to add to what Dr. Domain presented, students begin working on their completors their freshman year of high school. They start making decisions about what courses they're going to take and what they want to study. They begin a CTE career path or a USM path. And while we would like to increase the number of students who are dual completors, we typically set that as a goal, we also have a lot of programs that compete with that goal. For example, if we want to have students try to take as many AP courses as possible, that's going to make it a little bit difficult for them then to also be a CTE Completor, because you have to commit four of your course opportunities to CTE. Same way, if you're in a performance group, band, chorus, orchestra, and you want to take AP courses, then it gets a little hard to also be a CTE Completor. So even though we do always set a goal to have as many dual completors as possible, we, you know, we kind of compete with that goal with some of our other programs. So a lot of what you see in these numbers represent ultimately what decisions students and their parents made as to what direction they were going to go in earning their Completor. And with that, we can answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Harchman?
Have we worked out technology, education, moving it down to middle school? Have we done that yet? Are we still working on it?
That would be, that would be a different course. The, the FOT course, the Foundations of Technology.
Okay.
Doesn't apply to a CTE Completor. That's a course that everybody has to take.
Okay. And has that been moved down to middle school yet?
No, it hasn't. I mean, we have looked at it. We have, like I say, we, we discussed at an earlier meeting that we have been told by the state that it is possible, and we've had discussions about it, but we haven't moved it into the middle school across the board yet.
I know we've gotten questions about the number of electives allowing students to take band and drama and so on. So if that would be moved down, that would open up another class, correct?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Is there other discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
I'd like to focus on the Career and Technology Education. Looking in the master plan, and I just, we'll read a short paragraph from that, talking about our school system improved over the previous year, missing the 90% threshold target by 3.65%. And this may be due, it was saying here, to data collection process. However, Arts and Media Communication, AMC, which is one of the career tracks, construction and development, environmental, agricultural, and natural resources, and career research and development clusters were especially low performers. Several students experienced an inability to be hired in their career field, and more than a few reported not being able to afford post-secondary education at this time. And again, it goes on to talk about improvement opportunities here. Help me understand where, we focus so much on college preparedness, and for some reason there's this disconnect between the importance of career readiness and preparedness, that there really isn't a divide between college and career, but somehow we haven't put maybe our resources or our creative vision behind career. Where do you, either one of you, where do you see us heading, and how can we turn that around?
Dr. Akers and I had this conversation earlier where it appears that our students have to make a choice between college and career, and it sometimes seems that we favor career, I'm sorry, college over career. And that certainly isn't the message that we want to send our students. There are two good options. Which option you take is up to you. We simply want our students to be prepared to have options when they leave us, whether they choose to do college or whether they choose to do career. As he stated before, we would love for them to have both. Where do we see us going? We would like to increase the number of students who finish successfully as dual completors. How feasible that is depends on, we will have to see how our scheduling works, whether there is an impact for the now six-period day that is now in place in our secondary schools. Again, we have the goal for increasing the number of dual completors and sending that message to our families and to our students.
I would say to, Dr. Wilcox has certainly charged us with looking at programs that aren't getting great results as far as students getting employment, that's not attracting a lot of students, students into the program, and getting more meaningful technical programs, whether it's at our 701 Frederick Street facility that's going to be opening up soon with an expansion of emergency services programs, or looking at some more technical programs, such as the program we're probably going to be starting with Volvo pretty soon. And please don't ask me to pronounce the name of the program, because it's like Megatronics something or other. I'd have to defer to Dr. Harding's on that, I think. But we are looking at more high-tech programs that are going to attract more students into the program and also have better results when they're looking for employment or continuing their career studies at the college level.
And I hear everything you've just said, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I guess it's going to come across that way. I don't see that it's an either-or choice here. I don't see college or career. I see them totally aligned and related. It's just at what point? Is it a competency? Is it a certification? Is it a two-year program? Is it a PhD? I don't see this distinction. And I was up at Clear Spring High School on the 13th as a member of a PAC committee, talking just about, they want Clear Spring High School to be the ag high school in the state. They're not talking about career as a second-class citizen. They're talking about career as premier, as the important place to be and being really relevant. And, you know, some of the, and I'm, I know I'm getting a little concerned, but real-world skills, creative outside-field employment, capstone programs, pathway, research grants, connecting with the community, connecting with counselors, getting, to Mrs. Harchman's comment, getting the choices down into the middle school. We need to start counseling these children in middle school. Mentor lists, people in the community that can be paired up with these students. I mean, in two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour meeting at I mean, in two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour meeting at Clear Spring High School, I was as excited about a program in this county as I've been in a long time. And to say that we're, it's an either-or choice, I take exception to that respectfully. So I just think we have some great energy in this county, and we need to go out to these schools and see what these principals and counselors are working for us. And I think this is something we need to refocus on, I really do. Thank you.
Is there other discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
I'm going to throw out something a little wild. There's been some speculation in the state about moving the start date of school, obviously, after Labor Day. And in addition to that, some people have talked about cutting the school year to 175 days. If that would happen, how about adding 30 minutes to every secondary school's day and going to a seven-period day?
Well, I mean, obviously, that would take a whole lot of discussion at a whole lot of levels, because, you know, contractually, obviously, there would be a whole lot that would have to happen, both to cut to 175 days and to increase the workday.
I said 20, well, 20 or 30 minutes. You'd probably have to multiply it out, so it was the same amount of time overall. But that would give you the extra periods to take care of your dual completers and allow kids back in. I understand some people say that that's what's affecting bands and other things, Something to think about.
Extended school day would be very interesting. I've read a lot about it, and different people have tried it. But there would be a lot of steps involved in getting there, that's for sure.
Is there other discussion?
Since we just did the, earlier today, had a work session on legislative priorities, I'd suggest that some of the concerns that Mrs. Brightman has raised really are state issues. I mean, these two tracks for career, college, or for career, technology, and for college aren't decisions we make. Those are made at the state. And it's the state, really, that has sort of bifurcated the process, which, I agree with you in many ways, that to create this artificial distinction, especially as young people move in and out of school, in and out of the workforce, you know, continuously often through the first 10, 15 years of their working life, as they're getting more certifications, more, I mean, our teachers are moving in and out of school because they need additional training, professional development, and achieving their master's degrees. That happens certainly in my career as young scientists with associate's degrees, try to get bachelor's degrees. It is almost an artificial distinction, but it's not the people, but I don't think people at that table can solve that problem. I don't think the people at this table. We can have some impact on it, but really, I think that's an issue to bring up with the state, because it's, it's the state that forces kids to say which kind of completer you're going to be if they're fortunate enough to be both. But I think your point's a good one, that it's a, it's an artificial distinction that is in place probably for very good reasons historically, but maybe aren't relevant to today's education and today's workforce.
And I would just say to that, would it make a difference if these numbers were flipped? If the number of CTE completers and the number of university system of Maryland completers flipped? I mean, all it does is really tell you what the students were interested in doing, you know? But it doesn't necessarily have a value, when one is not more valuable than the other. It's almost more like an interest survey than it is any kind of accountability piece.
But if we don't help our students become aware of the opportunities in the real world, and what path might take them or help them go to that, other than the traditional go-to-college, or a four-year is the only way there, I think we do them a disservice if we don't have a broader conversation along the way and start much earlier. And I agree with Dr. Harding's, it is a state definition, and maybe the counties need to have that discussion, and I believe it may. Dr. Lowry was talking about a renewed interest and emphasis in the career, and maybe that's the opportunity to take the conversation there.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you, Dr. Domaine. Thank you, Mr. Akers. Next item on the agenda is personnel action.
Ms. Francisco, thank you for being so far forward this evening.
She edged off.
It was not lost on me, I saw that.
Dr. Harding, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. As discussed in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and approval this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions recommended by staff?
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of staff recommendation for personnel.
Is there a second?
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mrs. Williams to approve personnel actions. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member abstains.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have reports to the board. A year-end update on the Washington County Public Schools Self-Insurance Fund. Mr. South, you're a busy guy today, Mr. South.
Good evening again. I am here this evening to present to you the status of the Washington County Public Schools Healthcare Self-Insurance Fund as of the end of the last fiscal year. That would have been June 30th, 2014. By way of background, for those that may be watching the presentation and not be very familiar with our insurance program, I'd just like to give a little background information. Washington County Public Schools is self-insured for medical surgical, prescription drugs, and dental benefits. We are fully insured with an indemnity plan for vision benefits. We do carry stop-loss at the $300,000 level, and we manage our healthcare benefit in an internal service or proprietary fund on our financial statements. As a reminder, we are a, an unbundled plan. That means that we have different plan administrators for the various parts of our plan. Our medical surgical administrator is Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield. Express Scripts, or ESI, manages our prescription drug plan, administers that for us. Our dental plan is administered by UCCI, or United Concordia. And as I mentioned before, we are fully insured for vision through National Vision Administrators, or NVA. By way of participation, the Board of Education pays 81 percent of the premium cost for the preferred provider organization option. You pay 85 percent for the POS, or Point of Service option, and 86.3 percent of the premium cost for the EPO, or Exclusive Provider Organization option. Looking at how our employees and retirees utilize the program, we have 2,292 active employees as of June 30th on our plan. We had 337 under-65-year-old retirees, and those folks utilize the same plan as our active employees. And then we had 1,347 over-65-year-old retirees who utilize a Medicare supplemental plan that's part of our plan. That gives us a total number of participants of almost 4,000, 3,976. If we look at those folks who are under 65 years old, that would be our actives and our under-65-year-old retirees. 76 percent of those folks participate in the PPO option. 19.6 percent, or almost 20 percent of those participants selected the Point of Service option, and 4.4 percent of our participants participate in the EPO option. So what is the value of this benefit to our employees? The total cost of our healthcare benefit package for all participating employees and retirees was over $40 million in FY '14. The value of that healthcare benefit, then, on a per-participant basis averages out to The Board of Education's share of that cost to provide this tax-free benefit for our employees was approximately $31 million in FY 2014. So how strong is our plan? Well, as you know, board policy states that the plan should strive to maintain at least a $3 million fund balance reserve. Now, that $3 million represents 10 times our, the amount of exposure that we retain. And we do retain, as I mentioned before, $300,000 of exposure before our specific stop-loss kicks in. Looking back five years at that fund balance, those reserves, you can see that five years ago, we were in a very precarious position, slightly less than $500,000 in our fund balance reserve in the health insurance fund. $500,000 versus a target of $3 million. As you look down that chart, you can see that we have success, successively added to our fund balance to the point where we now stand, or we stood at the end of the year at nearly $9.5 million in our fund balance. For the last three years, we implemented premium increases that were 6 percent less than the actuarially recommended balances to reduce our fund balance. We did this, as I said, to reduce the fund balance. However, in 2014, despite the fact that we had implemented premium increases somewhat less than recommended by our actuaries, the planned performance once again outstripped the planned reduction, and our fund balance once again grew instead of shrinking. That is, that is good news, because what that means is that our employees and our retirees are being very frugal and very prudent in the use of our plans. So in response to this growing fund balance, the board announced a one-time premium holiday, which will take place on the payday of December 19th, coming up in about two months. As we look to the future, we see the Affordable Care Act coming down the pike at us, and we know that that will create some short to intermediate-term uncertainty in the healthcare market. Our plan could possibly experience new fees and possible penalties associated with the Affordable Care Act. However, we do believe that our current fund balance positions the plan well to weather any of these upcoming changes and uncertainties. With all that being said, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that the board members may have at this time regarding our year-end position with our healthcare fund.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brightman?
I'd just like to ask the Keenan question again, as far as the prescription costs. What I'm understanding throughout the state is districts are looking at the numbers and are finding that there appears to be some cost savings in the prescription drug with Keenan, and that somehow they're aligned with Express Script. So I was wondering what staff brought back from their informational session.
We, Mrs. Keller and I went down to the May presentation approximately a month ago, as I recall. We were very impressed with Keenan's presentation. We did talk to both Keenan and Steve, Mr. Steve James, down at the, at the May offices, and both of them advised us that since we are so close to putting out a bid, that it would be to our advantage, rather than having Keenan look at our plan at this particular time and then have to relook at it when they bid. It would be, would be just to hold off and let them bid on it. So essentially, our Express Scripts, or our ESI bid, will come through Keenan when we do go out to bid. And as the board had instructed staff, we will be going out to bid. In fact, our RFP is being built as we speak. We will be going out to bid for the plan for, for medical surgical and for prescription drug for implementation 7-1, 2015. So we will, we will be asking Keenan to bid the ESI through, through Keenan.
Excellent, good.
Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to thank the employees, as, again, as we did maybe a month or two ago, for, really, the reason that the fund balance continues to trend in a favorable, favorable direction is that our employees are, I assume, getting the healthcare that they need when they need it, but I hope healthier lifestyles and a healthier workforce is helping to keep our premium expense, or our claims expenses down, which is, which is a great thing for all involved. One other thing that I'll just point out, you know, people always ask about, what's your administrative costs? What's the overhead? Because, you know, that's, people perceive that as not going directly to the benefit. If you look at between 2010 and 2014, the administrative costs, so that's the vendor who manages the, manages the claims, its consultant services, all those sort of administrative costs, we're spending, we spent last year $14,000 more than we did in 2010. So we went from 2.8 million to 2.81 million in administrative expenses. I think that really demonstrates the way that particularly the finance and the benefits staff have looked to make sure that every dollar that's possible can go towards claims rather than towards what I would call overhead. So I think that's something that we can be proud of, and shows that the staff responsible for this fund takes very seriously their responsibility to make sure that every dollar possible gets to employee benefits rather than to other costs.
Thank you for those kind words, and we will certainly try to wring out some more costs from our administrators as we go out to bid and consummate a new or continue with our current vendors, whatever comes out of the RFP. But we'll certainly use that opportunity to try to wring out some, some more dollars that can be used on the claim side as it pays to the administration side.
Just to make sure that people at home hearts don't stop, that's the claims administrators, not the administrators of the school system.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And put in broad context, that's, that's less than $3 million out of $40 million total expense. So that's around 6%, 7% of all the funds that flow through the health insurance fund go to administration. 90, whatever the balance is, 93 percent or so go towards employee health. I think that's a-
That's correct.
I think that would stack up well against anybody in the industry.
One additional question. How would you, and I think I know the answer, how would we value this health insurance on average per employee? Is it a $10,000, $12,000, $13,000 value a year?
On a per-participant basis, it's about $10,000.
$10,000, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, thank you, Mr. South.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
That brings us to board member committee reports. Mr. McHoe?
Yes, the SGA had a general assembly last Tuesday, October 14th, at North High. We did leadership activities with our representatives. Then the next general assembly will be Tuesday, November 11th, at 9 o'clock at the Board of Ed.
Thank you. Mrs. Hartsman, curriculum and instruction?
Curriculum and instruction will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, October 28th, 11:15, in the board conference room, and everyone is invited.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, the finance committee will meet on October 28th at 3:30 in the finance conference room on the third floor. And then I'd also like to give a very brief report. I attended as liaison, I attended the Diversity Task Force Focus Group last evening. There were 17 in attendance. And while I can't tell you what we did, because it was a confidential focus group activity, I can tell you that I think that the report will be quite beneficial to, to the work that the board is interested in doing with regards to this priority.
Excellent, thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Yes, policy committee met on October the 9th, and in preparation for today's business meeting, we reviewed and made some formatting, as well as some informational changes to those facilities' policies we dealt with earlier. those facilities policies we dealt with earlier, as well as to the public charter schools policy. And we will also meet on October 28th, but at 1:45.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Bailey, facilities?
Well, excuse me. October 28th is our date. We meet at 8:45, and we're going to change places. We're going to take a look at 701 Frederick Street and do a before-and-after kind of thing. As the construction progresses, we'll see the empty spaces, and then we'll go back and take a look when it's buttoned up later in the year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Ridenhour, human resources?
Yes, the human resources meeting scheduled for October 28th, 2014, has been canceled. It will be, the next meeting will be discussed and scheduled at the appropriate time.
Okay, Mrs. Breitman, anything from Mabe?
Legislative Committee, which we've discussed most of that today when we talked at our work session on our legislative positions. Mrs. Williams attended as the alternate. I appreciate her attendance. A couple items that did not come up earlier today was the state-level Special Ed Citizen Advisory Council is requesting and working at the state level for a possible third diploma option, and that came up. Also, the, as mentioned earlier, the post-Labor Day proponents are requesting a shortened school year down to 175 days. The other point of interest, the Early Childhood Education Race to the Top Grant that Maryland is applying for would bring $15 million a year into the state for four years. So I think that is pretty much some of it. I don't know if Mrs. Williams has anything to add.
I don't. I think you did a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from any other Mabe committees or any other committees? No? Okay, that brings us to miscellaneous business. There's one topic I'd like the board to discuss and perhaps take action on based on a discussion we had earlier today during the legislative priorities discussion. As many of you may know, the state is transitioning from the HSA to the PARC for high school students, or at least some high school students in some subjects. And there's an expectation that just as the HSAs are a condition for, passing the HSA is a condition for graduation for students, that when the PARC tests are given this year, those will also become graduation requirements for students. Last year, the legislature passed a law that said that the results of these high-stakes tests can't be used as a part of teachers' evaluations for at least two years, as we learn what the baselines of these new assessments are going to be, what the cut scores are going to be, and how students are going to perform. There is a movement by some in the state, a couple of other counties, to try to apply the same logic to high school students, which is that for two years, students are not going to be penalized or kept for getting their diploma based on the results of how they perform on the PARC assessment. So the question is whether we, as a board, and the superintendent, want to join that group and send letters to the state superintendent and the chair, or the president of the State Board of Education to also request that there be a delay in the use of those high-stakes tests to determine graduation requirements. Dr. Wilcox, you have anything further to add?
Well, I want to share with the board first my thanks, because last week, as I was contemplating just the confused messages that I was hearing from across the state and talking with my colleagues who are superintendents who were equally perplexed by what was being proposed, I asked you, as board members, to consider writing a letter to Dr. Lowry and to Dr. Duke, who is the president of the Maryland State Board of Education, asking for some additional time to check the validity of the assessments, to check the establishment of the cut scores, and to be sure that young people weren't caught in the crosshairs of best intentions but ill-conceived outcomes. And so we have taken some time to draft a letter. I have told Dr. Lowry that we were contemplating sending this letter. And what we're really asking for is a moratorium. We're asking for some time to give these assessments, because we embrace accountability. We think that accountability is a right-minded tenet of education reform and changing the face of education and how we serve our kids. But ultimately, we can't have our kids penalized by an instrument that is perhaps not ready for primetime. So we've asked for the moratorium, if you will, on the use of these scores. We've also asked to be engaged in a conversation to talk about what will we use in the interim to help certify that our young people are qualified graduates of the system and, in fact, ready for either the workplace or college or university. So I would hope the board would join together today and say that it is appropriate to send this letter. I would encourage you to do so. And if that is the case, if the board is willing, we will send this letter tomorrow to the State Board of Education and to the State Superintendent of Education.
Is there any discussion?
Just to add one point, as the state board is meeting on October 28th to discuss, this is on their agenda, so I think it is very timely for us to have this out to them. And I know there's at least four other counties that I'm aware of as of yesterday that are doing something similar. And I would suggest that we copy it also to our delegation.
Any other discussion? I certainly support the idea. I think for me, it's as much a matter of what you said about these assessments and whether they're ready for primetime. But it's also, even beyond that, to me, an issue of fairness for some of our kids, because if you're taking algebra this year and it's a graduation requirement, Common Core Algebra assumes certain things that you've learned in your prior years of math instruction from the deeper, more focused Common Core standards, that that student didn't have the benefit of having, because we've just made the transition in the last year or two. So is it, does it really make sense to then, for that child, require that you pass this assessment as a condition of graduation, when for the last five or six years of instruction before it, they weren't provided with the foundational knowledge that they needed to necessarily be successful in that course? Because this transition's just occurred in the last year or two. So that's why I think it makes sense, even if the assessments are ready for primetime, to give time for those students to gain that foundational knowledge, so that when they're taking the high-stakes tests, they really have had the information that they need. And I want to emphasize too, what Dr. Wilcox said. I don't, certainly I am not running away from accountability. The assessments will still be given. The results will still be available to the public. Any member of the community will be able to see how students performed throughout the system and in which of our schools. The question is, do we want to put our high school students in a position where, because of when they happened to be going through high school, they're getting stuck in this transition and possibly penalized by this condition for graduation? I think it makes sense.
And so, Dr. Hardings, not only did that weigh into my thinking two weeks ago when I began contemplating sending this letter, but even beyond that, once we find a young person who is struggling to be successful, because we don't know which group of kids that will likely affect, because we don't know as to some of their preparation to be ready for this, we also don't have the remediation and support structures in place to help those young people then move across that threshold if they're not successful. Some have said, well, we'll use the Bridge Program that many folks are familiar with. But will the Bridge Program, as it's currently constituted, actually be a good reflection of the learning that the students are doing? We don't know that. And so, again, it's not just for the preloading for success, but it's also that backloading for the kids who are not successful that we have to be sure that we have properly in place to support our community. So again, I encourage the board to allow us to send this letter. I take the suggestion of sending it to the delegation very positively, and we'll add those names tomorrow if it's the board's wishes to send the letter.
I think I recently read now where students must have attempted the test twice before they can do the bridge.
There is some discussion, but I don't think all of those results have been finalized either yet at the State Department. One of the things, and I don't think we need to belabor this, but one of the things that was said recently at the Mabe Conference is, well, what we will do is we'll come up with one cut score to talk about your passing of this for graduation, but then we'll have another cut score on top of that cut score that would say that you are actually college or career-ready. I just think that that sends such a confused message to our larger community, that people won't know, well, which score should I really pay attention to? But again, I just don't think we're ready to do this as a state in primetime yet. We ought to be very thoughtful about this and make sure that what we put out is something that we can all stand by and that we can be accountable for.
Is there any other discussion? If not, is there consensus to send the letter on behalf of the board? Okay, appears that there is. Seven to zero, and the student concurs. Although it's not a motion, we certainly have consensus. Second item under miscellaneous business is future agenda items. Agenda planning did meet today. A few things to note, on November 4th, we're going to start our closed session at 11 o'clock rather than 10:30. That is Election Day for those paying attention, and we thought that we didn't need all that time to take care of all the closed-session items. We will, on November 4th, at the business meeting, have the legislative priorities, which we discussed earlier today. And what else? We scheduled a report on summer school for the December 9th business meeting. I think those are the only significant changes that we made to the agenda. That brings us to board member comments. Mr. McHoe?
Nothing.
Mrs. Harchman?
I'd just like to remind people that we are here at the board to do board work and not for free campaign airtime for political candidates.
Mrs. Williams?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
And Mrs. Fisher?
I'd like to say kudos to Tech High principal Jeff Staffer, to the instructors of the Fire and Rescue Academy and their students for yesterday's simulation. I think it was a wonderful, valuable experience for all those involved, and I'm sure it was also very exciting for the 10th-grade students that were visiting yesterday to be able to watch that very dramatic, and from what I've seen and heard, realistic robbery and shooting and fire and whole nine yards.
You know, it's also a principal who gave his very best to this. The car that we saw on fire was Mr. Staffer's car.
Right.
Oh, boy.
That's going above and beyond, I'll tell you. Mr. Bailey?
I have nothing to say tonight.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing.
Mrs. Breitman?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
I have nothing either. There's no further business. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.